Good evening. This is the Wareham School Board meeting. It is now seven o'clock and we will now open. For our first order of business this evening, we will do our reorganization. I'd like to take a motion and nominations for president, please. For chair. President does well, but chair will do.
I move that Ron DeHuguen be the chair of the Wareham School Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is it appropriate that we ask to cast one ballot, unanimous vote?
Absolutely.
Yes.
So moved and...
Yay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you accept?
I do. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the meeting is yours.
Thank you very much and I appreciate the committee and her having faith in me to be the chair going into this year and I look forward to working with the superintendent and setting agendas that will absolutely help us move this school system forward. I would like to take a nomination for vice chair.
I'll move Cliff Sylvia, Dr. Cliff Sylvia, for vice chair.
Second.
Cliff, do you accept? Oh, look at that, he's away.
That'll teach him.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Three, zero, zero. I'll now take a motion for secretary.
So moved, for Mr. Mike Flaherty.
Second. Will you accept?
Yes, I accept.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain?
So who seconded it?
That's what I was kind of wondering.
Oh, second.
I was waiting for it.
Yes. Okay, great. Well, welcome to the new board and we'll move forward. So, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the committee? All right, seeing none. Good news. Our first order of business on good news is the DeKiss School fundraiser. Can we have everybody come up? Absolutely. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Would you bring the microphone closer to you, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Great.
So, the scene is February vacation and I was in my room, just thinking, and I thought, how am I gonna think of a way to raise money for my school? Then I thought of a fundraiser that I could have at Flagship Cinemas, right down the road from my house. So I told my mom, "Mom, I thought of a fundraiser," and she said, "Really? What is it?" And I told her and she said, "Wow, that's a good fundraiser." So, what I did was, I called Flagship Cinemas and she, the manager, told me to come down to talk to them. So I said, "Of course." And I told my mom, "Mom, can you drive me there? Because I can't drive." And she said, "Sure." So we drove down there and I discussed some things with the manager and she said that, I told her my idea and she said that since it's such a good idea, they usually rent the place out at $200, but since it was such a good idea and for a good cause, she would rent it out for me to $150. So I accepted. And I chose a movie. It was Oz the Great and Powerful in 2D. And then on the next Honors Society meeting, I told them about it and almost everybody voted for my idea, so we put it into motion. And the day of it, I got there, like, I got there, I was one of the first people there. And as people arrived, when I was on my way there, I noticed that there was an accident down the road and I said to myself, "Oh, great. With my luck, this will probably affect the movie." So, I went down to the movie theater and as people came, I found out that there was no power in the theater that day because there was an apple truck going down the road and another car went into collision with it and all the apples spilled out and they hit a power line. So, the power was out in the movie theater. So me and a couple of my Honors Society friends were walking around to every car that got there and telling them, like, we made up a little speech, like, "The power's out, it could be on any minute, so if you'd please just wait, we'll keep you updated." So, it turns out that when, like, maybe like, an hour, hour and a half before the movie was gonna start, we found out that the place wouldn't have power till 1:30 and the movie was scheduled for 10, I think. So, we had to tell every car to leave and come back tomorrow at around 9:00, 9:30. So, most of, it was good and bad because some people came, some people didn't, but new people came, but we lost some customers, so it kind of turned out for the better. And the movie was spectacular. I'd give it like, a 9.8 out of 10. It was very, a very action-y movie and we raised over $1,000. So, I'm hoping that we're gonna use it for a school store at our school.
If you could introduce yourselves.
Oh, I'm Joey Pharoah.
Joey, and the rest of, can you introduce yourselves?
I'm Brian Gallagher.
I'm Andrew Brightman.
I'm Joshua Flaherty.
I'm Emma Fitzgerald.
I'm Isabella DeBois.
Well, first of all, I just think that you all deserve a round of applause. So, I'll open up comments from the committee.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. You did a great job, Joey. I was just so, so heartened when I went to that show. I was looking forward to going to it anyway, you know, it was such a great cause. But when I sat in that theater and I looked back and I saw all the people in that theater, that was incredible. You really pulled it off. And even with the power failure, you guys did a great job. Congratulations and thank you for supporting the schools.
Thank you.
After such a successful first effort, despite the fact that things tried to go against you, I'd like to know what lesson you've learned so that your next fundraiser will be even more successful.
Well, I guess one lesson is that sometimes things don't work out like you planned, but sometimes it's for the better.
It's a great attitude. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job.
Well, I just wanted to say that I think that your story was as entertaining as the movie. So, thank you for that. Thank you for putting all of that commentary on top of it. I felt like that I was almost, I was there, so I appreciate that. The second thing I just wanted to say is, you are, all of you are the examples of why this town is so amazing. And for you to take the initiative, to come up with something on your own and then to execute it, there are many people in this town that should look up to you for that and more people need to set, go by your example. So, I want you to know that you're heroes to us and we appreciate everything that you do and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Other good news?
You can top that.
From the committee. I know. You can't, so. Any other pieces of good news from the committee?
Well, I'm surprised you guys are leaving out a very important part of good news. I watched the, I watched the FinCon meeting on WCTV where the superintendent from the Upper Cape gave his presentation. And I heard the best compliment I could ever hear of our middle school, that the reason, part of the reason why there's, have so many Wareham students at that school is because of the good grades that are coming from our schools. And I thought that was really good news.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Ken, come on over. We voted you in as chair. So, come on. Here you go.
I respectfully decline.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have approving the minutes of the meeting on April 3rd. Everyone can pull that up and I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
The last line of the minutes, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it. Here they are. Something, it states in reference to, this will bring, it states just before any other business, quote, "The school budget will go to town meeting as an unbalanced budget." I don't think that's technically an accurate statement. I know what, what was attempting to be communicated. It is true that, as it stands now, with the actions taken by the school committee during this meeting, that if nothing happens, there, between now and the town, and town meeting on the part of the school committee or the town administrator, there will be an unbalanced budget presented, but I don't think we can technically make that statement and my recommendation would be to simply delete the statement.
I would agree with that. Any other comments on that piece? Do we have general agreement on that? Okay. So I'll take a motion with that amendment to delete the last line before any other business, "The school budget will go to town meeting as an unbalanced budget." I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
So moved as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Four, zero, zero. Thank you. Our next presentation is about blended learning. Welcome.
Thank you. I brought some friends with me.
Excellent. I'm telling you, this is, we want our meetings to look like this every week, so we just have to keep putting presentations like this on.
And I'm looking forward to the students from DeKiss coming to the middle school.
You should.
Did you get the email that I sent you all with a copy of press release?
Yes.
So maybe somebody would like to mention that as, since Bonnie is here.
The chair has given me permission to tell everybody that we are, have a honored PBS Innovator Award teacher in front of us tonight. In a press release dated April 9th, Ms. Lasorsa was given an award by the PBS Innovator Award, which apparently is something that goes on, on a annual basis. Bonnie, is that true? And it's specifically for the work that she has done that we are going to be privileged to hear about tonight. So it's, it's great to not only have Bonnie here tonight, but to know that other people are recognizing the contribution she's making to education in general. So, Bonnie, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So, my name's Bonnie Lasorsa and I teach 7th grade math here at the middle school. And I began something this year and with me, I have some students and some parents that I'll introduce you to in a moment, but I also have Sharon Burbage, who just ran out of camera, who co-teaches my inclusion class with me and it has been a very important part. Not only does she help in the classroom, but she's also been my sounding board for this for an entire year. So, all right. So this is, this is why, these are some of the things that happened this year that encouraged me to do this, to set this up for you. So, I've been here, this is my eighth year. I've always taught 6th grade. And one of my everlasting frustrations has been, any principal I've had that said, "What can I do for you?", my answer's always been, "I need more time. I need more time in class, I need more time with my students, I need more time to help them work on projects." That's been my answer to everything for the entire time. A continuous struggle with how to handle homework. Did it serve the purpose that I intended for it? How do I handle it? How do I review it? How do I grade it? How does it play into that time? Frankly, and they'll agree with you, I talk way too much and so from...
You should see behind you right now.
I'm sure.
Great.
They'll agree with you. So, I can do in a video in eight minutes what in class would take me 30. They are very talented at getting me off track, so in a video, I can choose exactly what I want to say and it's done. And then, students in my classroom, we really want to encourage our students to take notes. Students take notes at different times. Adults take notes at different times. In a classroom, if you're doing a slide presentation, then, you know, one student would say, "Oh, I'm done," and they start doing something and the other student's not done and there's not enough time and I need to go back and... And then my, the last two, one has always been a struggle as far as, how do you get the students engaged? What are the things you do in the classroom so that you have their attention? And my final one there is personal. I have three sons, two in college and one in high school. My student, my son in high school's at Upper Cape. It's a tremendous place. And they have incredibly different learning styles and they span the complete range when you think of a student in your class. Whenever I would plan a lesson, I would think, you know, "Is this gonna work on this end and is it gonna work on this end and how am I gonna keep them all in one classroom?" So those were the things that came to my mind when I started doing this. So, why did I do it now? One, I changed grade levels. I actually had the honor to loop with these lovely students behind me. I had them in 6th grade, I have them in 7th grade, which was a tremendous benefit to me. They're an amazing group of students. But it also forced me to switch grade levels. I had to change the way I did things. This was a new curriculum, it was a new grade. It was a wonderful time to make some changes in the way I did things. It was also my second year with iPads in my classroom as part of the iPad pilot. And then probably the most important one is, I am a Master Teacher Fellow through a National Science Foundation grant with UMass Dartmouth and CUSP. And a speaker named Alan November came this summer and talked about time in the classroom and technology in the classroom and ways to get that. And then the other thing, and as I talk to other teachers, I say this over and over again, right now with two sons in college and one son in high school who really doesn't want to spend a lot of time with me, I have time to do this because it has been a tremendous amount of time. Could I have done this when, when the boys were babies? Probably not. It has been a lot of time. So, what's it look like? So in a traditional classroom, my classroom for the last eight years, seven years, the class would start with a five to 10-minute problem of the day. This is our warm-up. Then the next thing we would do is we would review last night's homework. And my feeling about homework has always been that if students did it, then they deserved the courtesy that I would review what they did and that they would get answers. So we'd spend 10 minutes reviewing last night's homework, which is terrific if the student did last night's homework. That didn't always happen, so in those 10 minutes, you have a population in your classroom that's not a part of the conversation. They're not engaged. And then 20 to 30 minutes, which was a direct lecture and questions and class discussion, and that left me five to 10 minutes for them to do problems in my class. So then they go home. In a traditional setting, when they go home, I divide, I gave about 30 minutes of homework a night. And I divide those students into sort of three groups. The first group were those students who, when they left my classroom, they were confident that they knew what they were doing, they went home, they did the problems, no trouble. The second set were the students, which is a significant population, who chose not to do anything at home. And then the third set is the set that I really want to focus on and this was the group that I was trying to capture. It's those students who went home, but because they had only done five to 10 minutes, five to 10 minutes max of practice, they got home and they didn't remember how to do it and they didn't know how to find how to do it. So that would be me with my youngest son there. We had tears, we had fights, and I teach math, so he couldn't say to me, "Mom, you don't understand how to do it," which I understand is a common, a common comment. So, so what happened with the flip? So I came in this fall and I said to my students and to my parents, "We're gonna try this." And for every section in the book, I created a video. And as a background, I have a technology background, so it's not, it wasn't as difficult as it sounds, but I created a video and you can hear a little piece of it. I made a PowerPoint presentation. I received a grant through the Foundation for Wareham Education for a software package called Camtasia. And Camtasia allows me to record what's happening on my laptop screen. At the same time, I can attach my iPad and I can write on the screen and records all of it in my voice. I tried several different packages and this was the best.
Welcome to chapter nine, section four, division of negative numbers.
Oh, no. No.
The big idea for this is that division of positive and negative numbers follows the same rules as sign.
It's not set up.
As decimalization.
Oh, well. I don't know why I lost it. Anyway. I know. So, students every night, oh, it just didn't like it when I went to the turn. This is what my classroom is like every day. Oh, well.
It's truly flipped.
It's truly flipped, that's it. All right, let's see if it comes back. So, every night at home, so the lesson begins the night before. The night before, we have a class blog, which I was gonna show you, but I'm a little afraid to now. We have a class blog that has all of their homework assignments, all of the videos, questions for every night. So they go on the night before and they watch a video. Their assignment is to watch the video and take notes. And the notes are actually what gets graded and we have a notebook check once a chapter. Videos are five to 12 minutes long and one of the things that, in doing the research for this, is that they can pause it, they can pause it, they can rewind it, they can re-watch it until those concepts make sense to them. So they watch a video, and then we're gonna try it, and then they go on a Google form. No, it just doesn't like it when it goes to the internet. Then they go to a Google form and they answer a few questions. And their questions, there's maybe two or three questions that are like homework problems, but the two that are really important are, there's one question that says, "On a scale of one to five, how do you feel about this concept?" And then there's a box where they can write questions to me. And before they come to school the next morning, I know exactly what, how they feel about the concept from the night before. As a form of formative assessment, before they walk in my room, I can structure my lesson based on what they said about the video the night before. They're incredibly honest. They are, tell me exactly what they think of the videos in very graphic detail. They really like it when the dog barks. So, I know before they get there, exactly what they think and where they are individually. I also have the chance to create groups and to differentiate at that point. I can have, you know, students who are very confident sit at this table and students who need some extra help sit here and we can differentiate around the room or they can collaborate with each other. So once in the room, we start the lesson with a poll everywhere, which is an online polling service. And I generally either use a problem from the night before or I spiral my concepts so that it's a, something from two or three lessons before. Five to eight minutes, they input their answers from their iPad and it shows up on the board. And so we have five to eight minutes to talk about it. And then I have, they have 50 to 60 minutes where they can work on projects, whether it's collaboratively, creatively, and this is where the iPads have been terrific. You can definitely flip the class without iPads in the classroom. Your options are much more engaging if you have them. So, the flipping is not part of the iPads, but what we do in our classroom has been tremendous with the iPads. So, what kinds of things are we doing in class? On a normal day, I would say 90%, 95% of our students are always engaged. Far fewer behavior problems. And the students are working together. We also use a program called Edmodo, which is an online, it looks like Facebook for school, and again, I would show you, but I'm afraid it'll go out. The students can go on and they, they submit their assignments there and they submit, so they have a digital portfolio, they can take quizzes on Edmodo. And right now, we have switched some of what we're doing in class so that I no longer test by chapter, but I'm quizzing and testing by Common Core standard. The award that I received, I called it Ladders of Success and the students were moving up the rungs of the ladder based on different standards and demonstrating mastery at each level. Right now, we're getting ready to finish the solar system, so we have in my classroom a 14 by 5, 10-foot solar system on the wall and they each have their own little alien that they designed. And as they pass a standard, they move from one planet to the next. For example, the International Space Station was probability of independent events. So they're moving through, we're just about done with it, the end of this week. So right now, we're moving through the solar system. They were goats going up Mount Everest for a while in another chapter. One of the best parts about it, and I have a small presentation that they put together as well, is that by doing this, I'm different, I can, different students can be, can pace themselves. And student A can be three levels ahead while the next one is, is still working on it. They continue to assess on a standard until they pass it. So some students have taken a quiz or a test, if you want to call that, or an assessment, five times before they understand that concept and then they move on. All right. So some, some hard numbers are the best that I can get. And before I give you these, I do want to preface it by saying that many things changed this year in my classroom. I did loop with the students, which is different. It is the second year of iPads, which is a different initiative. They are by far one of the most incredible groups of students I've ever had. And so I think that that plays into it as well. But, so the hard data that I could come up with, definitely increased student engagement and I hope they'll have a chance to tell you that. By far, a farther, a larger amount of time for them to work on problems. My goal in class is to touch base with every student at least once a day. Do I, I don't always make it, but I do a pretty good job, far better than I ever did. So we have an average of 10 minutes to 40 minutes per class every single day for them to be actually working on problems with people available to help them, be it another student or myself, Mrs. Burbage, an aide, the internet, they're working on problems in my class. They're not sitting. Homework rates. Last year, approximately 68% of my students, if I looked at their homework grades for the entire year, this is the same set of students, 68% of them had a 70% homework rate for the year. This year, 83% of my 69 students... This year, 83% of my 69 students have watched and taken notes on every single video so far. To me, that's an ama, that's an amazing number. We did survey parents. I used the blog to communicate with parents. The students and I created, it was their homework one night, created a Google form for the parents. I had 48 out of 69 of my parents respond, and I'd be happy to share that information with you if you, if you like. It was all positive. And it was anonymous, so they didn't have to put their names to it. Nothing was going to happen in class. Overall grades, 73% of the students have, their grades have gone up this year from sixth grade. This is their overall, as of right now, their yearly grade. 5% of their grades have decreased, and of that 5%, I would say the largest part of that 5% are the very, very top students, where they maybe went from a 98 to a 97. And then 22% remain the same. All of my special education students, except one, raised their overall grades. And the, those mid-level students, they're the ones that made the greatest increases. I have 10 students out of 69 whose overall grades went up more than 10 points. And that's, that's a yearly average. I have one student who has gone up three letter grades and 25 points. And he, well, actually, he told Jamie today, it's because he's doing the problems in class. That's from his own, I tried to get him to come tonight. I have more time to spend individually with the students, and I really don't have behavior issues in my class. All right, so what's next? We tried some videos online, chapter five, we used videos from a company called Learn Zillion. It was not popular. They told me rather overwhelmingly that they would like to hear, they want to hear my voice, they want to hear the dog barking, they want to hear my silly jokes. I would, next year, I would like to move towards, instead of videos based on chapters and sections, to base them on individual standards. And then I would also like to look at Schoolology, which is another online learning management Again, I, I can't say enough about these students. And so open, positive and negative about what we've tried. Administratively in the building, it's been, you know, the number of people who stop in my room to say, "All right, how's the flip? What's, what's happening? Can you show me what's going on?" And of course, for me, the availability of the technology has been tremendous. And so, then this is from the students, and I'm hoping that it's going to work. I gotta switch it to the other one. All right.
Hi, my name is Fiona, and I think that this way is more efficient because you can work at your own pace.
There it is.
And you can get help when you need it.
Hi, I'm Anna. I think this is like a great way to learn because like, it's more fun, and that's what like kids want, like, they want to like learn but have fun at the same time. Because if it's like boring, they wouldn't want to do it. So since it's like using the iPads, we get to like play math games, which is like educational at the same time, and we get to learn more with fun ways.
Hi, my name is Kylie, and I think this is a better way to learn because some people take longer to learn things, and this way you won't be behind because you can go at your own speed to learn it, and we won't keep moving on without you.
My name is Doria, and I like the system because you can go like as fast as you want to or as slow as you want to, and if you don't understand something, or you don't get a good grade on it, you can go back and retake the test. So you're never like worried about messing up.
I'm Sarah, and I really like the way we're learning this year because the method works really well, and you can work at your own pace. But mostly the videos at home, it's a much easier way to do math work, and you can pause and like rewind if you don't understand a question, and that's what really helps me because I don't tend to go as fast sometimes.
My name is Justin, and I think it's good because if you had, I think it's fun, good to learn this way because like, on the videos, like, say you had like a doctor's appointment or something, and you weren't able to like watch the video, you'd be able to watch it the next day along with another one though, so, you know, I, I like it.
Hi, I'm Allison, and I like watching the videos at home, so in class, we don't have to do a big boring lesson, and at home, just do a bunch of problems. So in class, we can ask about them and it will make sense.
Hi, I'm Victoria, and I really like the system for the math homework at home with the videos because if you're absent, you can re-watch them and you're never behind with the class like last year.
So we actually created that with a new system that I have in the class where they, it records, it records what you say and it records what's running on your computer in the classroom, and it's got a pass-around microphone, and it's on loan to us to try it. And so the students wanted, the students who couldn't be here wanted to record some of their comments. I do have to say that one of the young men's, who we didn't get the recording straight, he did say he thought I should have catchy theme songs on all my videos. I'm not quite there yet. So that's what I have. So do you have some questions, or would you like to hear from both the students and the parents? I think so, if possible. So let's hear from the students and parents, and then I'll open it up to the group to
Hi, I'm Emily.
I'm Derek Gallagher.
I'm Maddie.
I'm Kylie Ennis.
I'm Kaylee Calvis.
So I think that just being able to tell us how you feel about the change this year, and just elaborate a little bit more about some of the things that you said on the video.
Um, what I think about this year from last year, last year, I didn't really get the concepts as much as I do this year, because with the rewind, re-watch, and with the rewind and re-watch, you can like understand it at your own pace, you don't have to go as fast as everyone else, and you can go through your own items as fast as you want, and it doesn't matter the pace.
Everyone doesn't have to talk, but if you're, feel compelled to, I think that we would love to hear as much as possible about how it's working for you. Yep, and yes, please, parents too, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Christine Gallagher. My daughter Sarah has had the privilege of being in Miss La Source's class for the two years, and it's been a positive experience. She went from a, like most, a struggling math student, an average student, to getting A's. This concept has been wonderful for her as well as parents, because I have the opportunity to sit and watch these videos with her, help her, any questions she has, it's just enhancing the overall learning experience that she's had. The confidence that she now displays and exhibits in any, it's helping in all of her subjects, but mostly obviously the math. She's just got this, an air about her now that when she goes to school, she comes home and she is looking forward to doing that homework, which she's never done before. She fell in that third category Miss La Source was talking about, that she would learn something, go home, forget it, get frustrated, the tears, the frustration for the whole entire household would be in an uproar. This year has been absolutely amazing. I can't say enough about the teaching styles, this program, I'm so proud of, of where she's come. I think that this overall experience has made me realize that it's almost kind of that separation, we went from a great experience to a wonderful. It's gone from putting us a little in the edge, it's gone from a great school to an awesome school. It's gone, I brag about it constantly with my friends and other programs in towns, and I think that's what Wareham needs right now, is, is that, that step up. We can be much better, and this program is, is, is one step in doing that. It may seem like a little extra work, but it's for the kids, that's what it's about. That little extra work has proven clearly, in our own experience as well as the whole class, that, that little extra work is what, what teachers are all about. It's what they should be doing, putting that extra time and effort in, in, in putting us in that better category than just okay. And, and that's, that's pretty much my experience and my daughter's as well.
That's right.
I can only hope that my son has that experience coming into the school next year.
Thank you. Stay close, I'm sure the committee will have questions too.
How you doing? My name's Kevin DeCalvis, my daughter Kaylee. Last year was a struggle. We worked hard, she, she needed help, we were working at home, and to hear the math teacher say she had the same struggles we did is a load off, the, I don't want to say fighting, but the frustration, the tears, I mean, we're talking hours after she'd already put time in, the concepts just weren't coming home from the class. We would sit at the kitchen table and, "Kaylee, what did she say in class? You know, do you have any examples? You know, help me, help you." And, and, you know, we, we were successful over the year. Eventually, we got the year, we got the grades to go up, and she did well enough, but, you know, it was leaving a bad taste in her mouth, you know, math, oh, and the only time we got together at night was battling, and it, it, it was rough. This year rolls around, and luckily, she's got Miss La Source again, and she's flipping the class, and she comes home and tells me, "Yeah, we're gonna," and I'm on board, she says, "We're going to watch the class on the video, we're going to take the notes, we're going to do the problems, and then we go to class the next day and we'll go over the problems. And, you know, and if we're doing well, we'll do other projects, and for the kids that aren't, they'll, you know, work with the teachers." And that, I'm saying to myself, this is exactly what I needed last year, is, is someone to just be able to sit there with her and go through it. And, and it's working out amazing. She loves it, the notes she takes are immaculate, and I know that's probably going to spill over the problems, she can go back and review, she comes home, it's the first thing she does. And she was talking about the confidence, I mean, last year, the anxiety and the stress, and, you know, she'd do a problem in front of me and kind of wince, and, and now, I mean, she's absolutely killing it. I'm watching the A's roll in, she's gotten A's all year. I swear, it's, like she said, it's spilling over into other areas. She has, her first two terms have been all straight A's, I mean, that's never happened. And I credit it to this, I mean, it's, it's, the confidence is crazy, and I, I was telling her, I wish she could go through the grades with these kids and keep doing this, because, you know, I'm not going to have the daughter that shrugs her shoulders and just says, "Well, I'm just not good at math." I mean, her passions are art, animals, fashion, but, which I love, but she's going to have this. She's got the fundamentals that are going to get her through high school and college math, because now's when it matters, and this has been, this has been a lifesaver. So whatever we can do to help her keep doing this, I thank you. I thank you guys, and that's about it for me.
Thank you so much.
And I'll take any questions, because this is a no-brainer.
All right, let me just say that this has been an incredible presentation. Thank you very much, Bonnie, for being here, and for all of you being here tonight and giving us your experience. I think that this is exactly what is needed to continue this positive momentum and to continue these kind of successes that we're seeing here. So with that, I just want to open up to the committee if anybody has any questions for, for Miss La Source, or the parents, or the kids. Kay?
Miss La Source, I just want to say, it was a tough grade for me, but I gave you and your class a 10. That was absolutely the best presentation I've seen since I've been on this committee.
Thank you.
And what, what you're doing is absolutely phenomenal, and I hope other teachers, and I'm, we have, Wareham has the best teachers, I, I found that out. But what you're doing is going over and, and beyond, and being creative, and I appreciate that. I'm sure every member up here will say that I, not just our teachers, all teachers in general are underpaid. But what you get in the lack of salary, you get an appreciation for what these kids are doing, and as you just heard from the parents, sometimes that's worth more than money, although a lot of us will disagree with that. But congratulations to all of you, I think it's an outstanding program, I'm just thrilled to death of it. Thank you.
Uh-oh. I usually say that.
First of all, thank you all for being here. It's, it's just great. I have a number of different questions, different areas of questions even. The first one is, I'd like to understand the degree to which, what you're doing, and I'll take answers from not only your teacher, but anyone, especially the students. I'd like to understand how this could apply to other subjects. Is it a uniquely math-oriented type situation that makes it that much, that's so successful? Or do you think it could, could apply to science, foreign language, any of the other subjects that you take? And do you notice the absence of flipping in your other classes and wish it was there? So that's a large question that I'll just throw out there, and I'd love to hear your responses.
I, I can start. The pro, the idea, the idea's been around forever. This is the same idea that when I was in high school, my English teacher would say, "Go home, read the next chapter, take notes, and then come back and we're going to talk about it tomorrow." It's the same idea, different in that-
Just, just for the record, forever is when I was in, in school, not you.
It's been a while. So it's that idea that you're, you're starting, that, that students are coming to class prepared. Does it lend itself to math? I've heard it actually both ways. On the one hand, math is a demonstration language, you need to be able to show how to do a problem and explain how to do a problem. And, and it took me a while, technology-wise, to figure out, you know, how to run a PowerPoint and be able to write on it so you could see it right on the PowerPoint. So in, in some ways, people say math is one of the hardest subjects, because it's not vocabulary-based, it's really about, you know, doing problems. The idea for flipping is actually two AP Biology teachers from Colorado that started it, wrote a book on it, I read the book this summer. And so that's where the title of it came from, I think the idea's been, has been around a while. They actually did science labs, labs that maybe were not safe to do with students in a classroom, or that were too expensive to do with all of your students. That's where it started from. So I personally think that it could be done in different subjects with a different take on it. I do teach one social studies class, and I have not as much time as anything else, I've never attempted to do that. I think you could, there's plenty of resources out there as well on the web that you could incorporate into it. You could, I, I use PowerPoints in my class, so it would be easy enough to do it at home. But I'm going to let them answer as well. Hang on just a sec. You guys answer. What do you think? Other classes? Maddie? Come on. Kylie, come with her.
Um, I think it could definitely be like incorporating to like science and stuff, because like, I don't know.
What do you think?
But my question was, would you want it to be?
Would you want it?
Yeah, definitely. I think it would make it much easier, more fun.
I like the whole idea of it, so I think it would be awesome in other classes, because some people just don't understand it the first time it's explained, and they just need to hear it again, and that's what it gives you.
I would want it incorporated into other subjects because if, like Kylie said, if you don't understand it the first way around, you can always go back to the video and re-watch it so you finally get it, and once you go back into class, you feel confident about the subject and what you're learning, so you can be right with the teacher and at her space, at her pace, so that you can be learning at, at your own pace, but you're also at the teacher's pace, and you can get everything handed in, in this, at this right time, so your grades don't drop, and I think it would be great.
Which is great.
I also think that you could benefit from having the flipped classroom in most classes, because not only math, which is more of like a, not hands-on, but it's more like a, when you explain it, you want to see it, or it's easier if you have a person standing in front of you, to me, if they're sitting there and they're explaining it to you, and whereas other subjects might be more hands- But I feel like math is a primarily subject for it because I do think math is one of the hardest subjects and it's one of the things that you can go back and re-watch, and that's one of the best things I love about it, but you could benefit from having it in all the classes.
Um, I do think that it would be good to have it because it would be good for, if you were struggling in that class, you could, like, they would have videos and you could watch the videos and take notes. And then the next day, if you're still like doing that same thing, you could look back in your notes so you know what you're doing. So it'll help you with like all classes and it'll help your grade go up and it'll help you understand the concept more.
Great. Thank you.
One more, one more big question for your teacher. Okay, sure?
Yep.
One more big question for your teacher. I suspect I'm not the only one in this room who is thinking, so how do we replicate this marvel into, so that it impacts a lot more students? What do you think the biggest impediment to trying to do just that is?
Training. I I I think that it it's a new idea and new ideas are scary. A lot of this year, some of my primary goals for these students are obviously to learn the math. But above and beyond that, I want them, and I tell them this regularly, we talk about growing neurons and that you can't grow neurons unless you're struggling. It's gotta be hard. And it it is, the class is more difficult this year than any class I've ever taught before, without a doubt. And I have backed off, you know, I won't, rarely do I answer questions the first time they ask them. My response is to, you know, you have all of these things here for you, so where can we find it? You know, can you watch a video? Can you go, can you Google it? Can we look in a book? Can you ask a friend? And that's, as a teacher, it's difficult when they ask for help, especially me, to keep my mouth shut. So my goal for them is that they take responsibility for what they're learning and that it be their goal to do well, and not just to do well with grades, but to do well with the concepts, that they really understand them. Don't memorize it for a day and move on. All of that said, it, as a teacher, used to being in front of a class, I have given up control of my class, and I don't mean behavior issues. Sometimes it is, it is a tad chaotic and it gets loud. But I have to let them, and I would say this to my own children, I I have to let them fail sometimes in order for them to to learn the lessons. In my class, you can retake a quiz or a test, so it's not gonna hurt your grade, but you have to struggle. And and I won't answer questions if there's nothing on the paper. I don't answer the question, where do I start? I don't answer the question, I don't get it because it drives me nuts. So you have to ask me a real question. You have to, you have to struggle with it because to me, that's what 21st century learning's about. Okay? So the lack of control to replicate is a very difficult thing, and I think it's an impossible thing to say to another teacher that you have to do this. This is, like I said, I have an engineering background and a computer background. I'm very comfortable with technology. Came in as a military wife, teaching technology across the country. So this is sort of what I like. I don't, my biggest fear is that anyone would say that you have to do this because I don't think that would work. That said, I think there's a lot of teachers out there that are afraid to try it. It wouldn't take them as long to create a video the first time as it took me. It probably took five hours to figure out how to do it because now I can show them how to do it. And Mr. Swat, you you set up with Dave, someone who'll come in and help us do it. And this system I'm trying out in my, in my classroom right now, it records as you teach a lesson. So it's making the video as you teach one lesson. So all of those things combined, I think the idea is good. I'm obviously all for it. And I just think it needs to be, I think the students' voices are important and what they say is important. There are teachers, other teachers in the school who are trying it. LearnZillion, Khan Academy, I'm sure you've heard of. Lots of teachers use Khan Academy. There's another company out there called LearnZillion who has, and it's free, and students have, there's videos created by standard, K through eight, I think now. So I I think it's, I think it's going to gain momentum as they hear about it. I definitely, definitely think that professional development around technology is, would be wonderful here, whether it's how to make a PowerPoint or how to use Excel, or now that we've gone to Google, how do you use Google Forms? How do you set up this form online? It, I mean, it grades it, it grades it for you. I mean, that's a good selling point. So how do you do that? Teaching teachers how to use some of these tools that are out there? Because being a teacher's a busy profession. There's a lot to go on. And like I said, my own personal life right now, I have time to play with it and and to try some things. So did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mike?
Hi. Just a quick thought on, I have some other questions, but on the replication, I mean, for your own, for your own benefit, once you've made these ones, I mean, you just reuse them, right?
If you're not a perfectionist. Ideally, yes.
So I mean, upfront, there's a lot of time, but it pays off.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. We had, we had a presentation on the iPods last year when I just just got on this committee and 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 I I I felt, and that was the first year with the iPads, so I felt it was really missing something. I mean, I thought they were really being used as basically a really cool e-reader. I mean, there was really no integration, I think, with the curriculum. That's my take on it. And I think what you're doing here, what you've done, is the next evolution where the technology is really being used as intended. You know, you're really, you're really integrating it. You've got a technology background. I mean, you know what I mean when I say groupware, right? So you're, you're probably kind of reinventing the wheel, making your own little groupware, you know, catered to what you need to do here. You know, you mentioned a blog, you mentioned this interface with the question and answer lessons, Edmodo. Now, all of that, I, I, those are individual components that are kind of, like you set, you set up, I take, right?
Edmodo is a, I wish I could show it to you. Edmodo is a, like I said, the best way I can explain it to you is a Facebook for school.
Oh, yeah.
And it's free. There's another one out there called Schoolology, which is also free. And it allows students to converse with each other. It allowed, next year, I probably won't do a blog. Next year, all my videos, all my assignments, everything would be done in Edmodo. I, I assign them in Edmodo by class, even our, I'm a student council advisor, even our student council's using Edmodo. The kids can log in from wherever, phones, wherever, and I can send them a message, we have a meeting this week. It's the way they think. It's the same way as we have eighth grade teachers using Twitter accounts. Same idea. It's, it's that ability to communicate with the kids and for them to communicate with each other. On Edmodo and Schoolology, though, they can watch the video there, they can see the Google Form there, they can, they submit assignments there. And so they, then they have a digital portfolio. And I did have the iPads last year. I use them, I use them. This year, though, it's an integral part of my class. So this is definitely the second year, you know, is exponential in how much the use. And and the students are creating, and part of this is from attending the iPad Summit, which was an amazing experience, that what you want the iPads to be, or technology to be, is a tool for them to create. And it gives them a choice. So when we were doing the ladder of success earlier, they had to prove to me they could add fractions. And I had students who made videos, I had students who made collages and scrapbooks. I had students who did it on a piece of paper and took a pencil, and took a picture of it and submitted it. I had kids who did a poster. But it's all about, I mean, everybody likes to have a choice. You know, how do you want to, how, what's the best way for you to do it?
All right. Did, did I hear you correctly that you said you don't need iPads to flip?
You do not need iPads to flip.
Can you elaborate on that?
So the idea of flipping the class in its basic form is that now it's videos, that a student has a video to watch the night before. You can make a video, you can record yourself in the classroom. I mean, there's a ton of ways to make it. The iPads in my class, though, have nothing to do with the flipped part of it. The iPads in my class is how we use that extra time, which I think is amazing, but they are two sort of separate initiatives.
Okay. Because just I'm trying to wrap my brain around the whole technology end of it and what's what's required at home. And I guess, I mean, if you could make the video, it could be on a DVD, I guess, or VHS and play it at home and then take off from there. Because the word we keep hearing all the time here is, you know, we can't, we can't do this, we can't do that because we don't have, we don't have the speed on our technology. You know, the the Neos report for the high school says 30% of our kids don't have the technology at home. And and, but you're saying that's really, it shouldn't be a hurdle, not so much.
I was sort of surprised that no one asked about access at home. So I have 69 students. Of those 69 students, I only have three who do not have internet access at home, which surprised me, honestly. Because I have the iPads, and this is one place where it differs, I have several students who will come in in the morning and watch a video during homeroom and take the notes for whatever reason. They forgot, they had hockey practice, whatever it happened to be. This year, my videos follow the book, so when they get their homework assignment, it says, watch video 9.6, chapter nine, section six, and answer the questions in the Google Form. Or read pages, whatever, and answer problems two, four, and six, or, you know, whatever it may be. So that that's an option. Of those three students that I have, one of them always watches the videos at school. He'll stay one day and he'll watch a week's worth in a day, which to me sounds boring, but it works. I have one student, a, a top student, and he's, and he says, I would rather read the book. I, the, doesn't like the videos, and so he reads the book and takes notes.
You don't take that personally, do you?
Nope. Not at all. And the other one does sort of a mixture of both. So, and students can watch the videos in class. Some of the pictures you saw, you know, they got to a place, they were trying to divide fractions, which is Saturn, and they couldn't remember how to do it. And so they, in class, you know, with headphones on and and the iPad, then they can watch the video there. Now, that is one place that if I didn't have iPads in the classroom, that would be limited. I can also put the videos on a DVD or a flash drive.
Okay. And just, just quickly, how, how big is this classroom? What's the size?
My class here?
Your class size, yes.
I have, I have three classes. One has 27, one has 23, and one has 20, 19.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just conscious of the fact that you guys are all standing back there, so I appreciate that. I just have just a couple of questions and it's, it's really, I want to hear from the parents. What have you seen? Have you seen any challenges in this or any lessons we can learn when we talk about rolling this out to other, other classrooms and other households? Things that we need to take into account from a parent's perspective, whether it's access at home or whether, if there's anything that we need to be aware of?
As far as access, you know, I seem to be talking about the iPads. They can wash these on anything, from their phone, their Kindles, the computer, to the iPad. And then for those that don't have that, there is access. The, the only issue I, I found with it is with the real-time grading through Edmodo and, you know, we, we got our hand on the, finger on the pulse of it all, is she's done so well with it is sometimes she kind of coast through a week or two and I don't hear anything. You know, I see the grades coming in and now if I see a little blip in the grades, I kind of, well, what's going on? Where are you? And I kind of don't know where we are in the course of things. But as she said, you know, this is the time for the kids to take responsibility for it. So and if the grades are coming in, I've, I've kind of just let it go. So there comes a point where, you know, if the grade slips, you, you might not know where. So there may be, you know, a slight communication gap in there. But I mean, if you're paying attention, you can, you can stay on top of it. And really, that's, let's see, the only issue. I think I contacted her once, said, you know, am I missing anything? And no, it was just the, the grades were rolling in a little slowly that day and I, I needed to take a breather.
And some communities, what we found as feedback is that parents are actually using this as an opportunity to learn also.
Absolutely, absolutely. We went over a math test last night and I think I learned as much as she did, and I mean, she was enjoying it. She woke up this morning bebopping around the house. The words, she said, I'm excited for my math test today. Who, who are you? You know, and I mean, this is, this is coming from this and so, I don't know.
I actually, I shy from technology a little bit. I'm not one of those, we don't have an iPad at home. We have one laptop. But I tend to use resources and networking, the, the library. If, if our laptop crashes or something happens, you gotta look to the community, you gotta look to your friends and family. Teachers, Ms. Sorsa will stay after any day that you give her a notice the day before to watch these videos. You, like I just said before, you can use the library. So there's a lot of other resources, I think, that, that can be, that, that the students can be using as well. So that's, you know, there's, other than that, they're really, I don't see any challenges. I mean, the work itself maybe, you know, the, the content, but as far as everything, you can, there's always a way. There's always a way. And I think the teachers are, here are wonderful about always staying after to, to allow them to watch a video.
Okay, thank you. And for the students, how many times have you watched one of Mrs. Sorsa's videos on your phone?
Every single time.
Every single time?
Yeah.
So the majority that you're either doing it on your phone or at some device that you have at your house?
Yeah, I have an iPad at home, so it's like the same, kind of like, I don't know, like it feels like you're at school and you're doing it. It's like, it's not, I don't know, creepy. It almost seems like Mrs. Sorsa's in our living room.
All right, that's a check for the negative. Any other burning questions that the committee has for this group?
Just one.
Okay.
All right. Sorry. I was just thinking as you were discussing that, now, this is what, seventh grade class? And let's say there were two other teachers in that class that was doing this. I mean, would, would it be something that you'd envisioned where like maybe if a student wasn't getting it through your video, that you're all in the same curriculum, you're all on the same plan, and you could say, oh, listen, talk to Mrs. So-and-so and, you know, that'll, you know, watch her video. Maybe, you know, have some feedback that way too, different perspective. That, that's something you could see happening too?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll just end with this. I can't thank you all enough for being here and telling your story. And I think the only thing that I can ask, you said what, what can be done. Continue telling your story, whether it's here, whether it's at town meeting, whether it's to newspaper or that. Those are the kinds of things that help build, help us, help you in a way, when it comes to continuing to get additional resources into the school. This is an amazing example of something incredible that's happening in our school system. So for the students and also for the parents, just being able to continue to tell this story, I would appreciate that. And thank you for being here. And Ms. Sorsa, you know, we, we talk about, you know, that, how much time and energy, and the one thing that I just have to say during this presentation that's abundantly clear is that you put a lot of work in this and you are absolutely a teacher, and I know a lot of teachers do, but you are putting your students first and, and you're making these decisions in the best interest of them. And we appreciate everything that you do and congratulations again. All right, great. Thanks.
And thank you, Mrs. Burbridge, too.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Burbridge. Great.
She needs to use the microphone. You need to be speaking in the mic because they're not gonna hear you.
Sorry about that. Next on our agenda is the Fall and Winter 2012-2013 Athletic Report. Mr. Rumble? And Scott? All right, this presentation better be as exciting as that one.
I don't know if she has.
Okay.
At least he's honest.
Yep.
We see those.
We have them.
The new email, the revised one I sent.
At least he's honest.
Yep. We have them?
The new email, the revised one I sent.
Yep. Okay.
This report has been written four times. And I hope this is the last.
Okay.
Should have one for fall and one for winter.
Great, thank you.
This one is fall.
Before we get started, if I can just make a comment, Steve Pizzola. I want to take back to September 3rd, if I remember correctly. I received a call from the athletic director, Monica Bangea, that he would be stepping down as athletic director and moving on to become himself as the assistant principal. And I'd also like you to keep in mind, at that point in time, we had just lost our athletic director, Secretary Ruth Donahue. The athletic department had made many strides in the last twelve months, and suddenly they were in trouble. My goal was to post a position as an interim immediately, and then to repost in the spring at a more advantageous time, where we would have a larger pool of applicants. And additionally, the person would have the summer to really get themselves prepared for the next three seasons. We posted the job as a part-time job, and we realized through the interview process that the person we needed to bail us out was Steve Rumbold. Steve had served the last few years as the site director for the previous two athletic directors, and he had coached numerous high school sports at Wareham High School. He did this for the first few months without any clerical help, and learning the nuts and the bolts of the position on the fly. I'd like to thank Steve for stepping up and holding out two full-time jobs. He's also the dean of students during the day and the athletic director at night. I appreciate the time he's put in this year, and I appreciate the time he's put in this presentation, and I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, boss. Would you like a minute or two to go through this, or would you like me to just read?
No, Michelle actually sent it to us before.
Okay, so.
So the committee has had time.
There's been a couple of changes. You'll notice that our total expenses, we're on the fall report now. And gate receipts, user fees, and that type of thing on the summary page in front have increased. That's due to my going through line item after line item, trying to find, especially in the fall, files with invoices and that type of thing, and just the learning process. So I think these numbers are very accurate at this point. I hope they are, based on the amount of time that my secretary and I have put into this. And we can get into the nuts and bolts when we go through each sport. It says in the fall of 2011, that should be 2012, we had a number of community service projects. Every team's required to do some community service, and there are some community service. The amount of time spent on that is not listed here, but in some cases, especially such as the cheerleaders, the soccer team continues to work with the youth in town. It's not just an in-season situation, is what I'm trying to get across. Going down to continued programs, we still have the preseason coaches meeting, where I hand out binders to the coaches with a checklist. A meet the coaches night, which, to my surprise, actually increased, at least from the winter to the spring this year. I thought it would go down, just because when you have athletes that have already been to something like this, and parents that have already been to it, that you just, you know, it's called mandatory, but it's hard to make something like that mandatory for somebody that's already done it in the busy, the busy lives that our parents have, not to mention the students. Let's see, captains' luncheons have continued, and our theme this year was humility. We talked a lot about leadership by example, really. And I basically just threw some quotes at them, you know, like, "A large head is an ugly head," and that type of thing. The Booster Club is up and running, and will donate $600 for conference championship jackets for our basketball team. It is not at a level we would like it, especially from a participation point of view with parents. But we're still working on it. There will be a Hall of Fame induction dinner for new inductees in the fall of 2013. Second page is a list of all our All-Stars. You'll notice in football, we had a great year. So along with that, we've got four All-Stars, excuse me, six All-Stars and two honorable mention. I'm not going to go through every single one of these here. I would like to mention, though, that we just found out, just prior to this information coming out, that Elizabeth St. Germain, who is a senior, she's the captain of the cooperative hockey team with Born and Mashpee, was one of five students in the entire state recognized as a scholar athlete for ice hockey. She's also going to be getting some other presentations and other awards. I know the Standard Times, she's our nomination for the Standard Times for Leadership Award, along with Quinton Salvera, that just went in back this week also. We were represented in all sports by various media outlets. Our boys and girls soccer teams received the South Coast Conference Sportsmanship Award this year, which I am particularly proud of. All coaches met with me at the end of the season, where we discussed program goals, how to improve, how to increase participation, which is a definite goal of mine, and how to keep students academically eligible. Any questions on that?
Any questions from the committee regarding the narrative? For the falls, for the actual going into each budget, does the committee feel it's necessary to go through each one of these? Or should we just basically say, I can, we can stop on each one and ask any questions that people have? Are you okay with that, or do you feel?
Sure, however you'd like to do it, it's my own thing.
Is that okay with the committee? All right, so we're looking at the, this first one is the overall.
That's a summary of overall. And fifty-five thousand, three hundred and five. I'm not going to read all of them to you. You can see what they are, and if you have questions, please let me know.
Well, let's do this, let's go. Are there any questions on the individual sports? Girls soccer, boys soccer, girls volleyball, field hockey, golf, cheerleading? Mr. Swett?
Steve, I just have a general question. Did I miss it, or we're used to seeing the number of participants for each sport?
I can give you a pretty good idea off the top of my head. I don't remember seeing that in Mark's report from last year, and that's basically what I tried to follow. We had approximately a little less than a hundred students in fall sports last term.
And how did that compare to the previous?
Football was down big time. Football, I believe, we only had between freshman, JV, and varsity, we had, I'm going to say, in the low thirties, in a program that has seen upward of sixty.
So in general, the number of user fees we collected was obviously down, and overall participation.
The user fees in the fall were really good. The user fees in the winter, we had a lot more waivers, but we had less students, too.
No, I'm just saying, if participate, overall participation from fall to fall was down.
Yes.
Then user fees obviously must have been down as well.
I don't have a comparison to last year.
Okay. And on top of that, overall, the town is slowly rising in terms of the free and reduced lunch percentage, which means that also impacts your ability to collect user fees. So it's creating a tough fiscal environment. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Thank you. If, if, it doesn't, obviously, I don't want it off the top of your head, but if you could send to the committee the number of participants by sport at some point, that would be great.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike?
I'm looking at the report that we got last time, and it's got columns for expenses, revenue, number of athletes, number of waivers, and team GPA.
GPA for both seasons was, in aggregates, eighty-four for both seasons for all teams combined. Now, if you'd like, I can give you some examples.
No, I just like the report updated at some point.
So you want GPA by team?
Yes. And I requested the figures retroactively, because they weren't on the last report. There was a column, but it was blank. I've been asking since January. I was wondering if we can get those numbers updated, too.
I'll put that together for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, when there's a reduction of almost fifty percent in football.
Well, that's not from last year to this year. I'm just saying that at one time, there, we've had upwards, at times, we've had upwards of sixty.
But it continues to go down, and it doesn't seem like it's because of user fees, because they haven't increased significantly. What do you look at in that situation on how to address it? Is it kids don't want to play for coaches? Is it they lost interest because of all the new technology and iPhones and apps that they can do now? I'm curious as to finding the answer why there's a reduction, and do you do any type of survey or anything to find out?
I haven't, to be honest with you, I haven't had time to. But I have thought about it, and not thought about doing surveys or anything like that. Certainly, our electronics-oriented students, you know, there's too many students who would prefer just to go home and, you know, bury themselves in whatever it is, iPod, computer, phones, everything that we have here. And that's not to say that there aren't a lot of students out there that don't do that, and that there aren't a lot of parents out there that won't allow them to do that. But I will say this, I walk around our school, and being dean of students, I have a lot of contact with the entire population. And I have asked students, very good athletes, that had played freshman sports and that type of thing, why they're not doing it. And the answers range from, "I have to work." And that's certainly true of some families. We have a, we have a person that's not playing tennis this year, Jeff will back me up on this, who is just a fantastic kid and needs to work. She's going to college, and she needs to have the money. Then you also have, if our numbers were reflected in the number of students that sign up for a sport, that are thinking about playing, our numbers would be double. We get a lot of students who don't want to put the, you know, football's a tough sport. It's a lot of work, a lot of physical work. The numbers go down after they start practicing, when they find out what it's going to be like. And you see that in other sports, too. Not as much as football. I think we have a little bit of more attrition, but that's because we have more players out there, too. So I hope that answered your question.
I think, Mr. Faunce, as well, it's a universal issue. It's not unique to Wareham. I meet monthly with the South Coast Conference principals, and it's something we're all dealing with. We deal with it on a greater level here at Wareham, because of our demographics, and I think Steve hit on it. We've got kids that have to work to support their families, to support their future endeavors. And unfortunately, they have to make those tough decisions. And he gave you a perfect example of a great young lady who's on the tennis team that couldn't come out this year. And there's multiple situations in multiple sports each season where that comes up, and it's unfortunate. In the more affluent towns, they're given a car, they're given the keys, and they don't have to work. It's something that we battle with.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the winter athletic report.
There is, well, we'll go through this quickly. We ran, you know, as far as the expenses go for both seasons, we pretty much stayed within budget. You know, we're at a point now where most of our supplies have been ordered. We just have a few more things that we need to get for the spring teams. We've stayed within the budget as far as that goes. The gate receipts is another example of students and families not, I mean, for a family of four, the maximum you're going to pay to come to an athletic event is $16 for a couple of hours of entertainment, lots less than you pay to go to a movie or that type of thing. Yet, for some reason, even when we have a team competing for the state championship in basketball, they just don't come out. I don't know why that is. But I digress. When we go on, I think one of the most important things that you're looking for here is the report from the Wareham-Carver co-op that we had with them for hockey and wrestling. And as far as revenues go, we expect a payment from Carver of about $5,400 when all is said and done. And when you take into consideration the amount of money that they spent for transportation for hockey, transportation for wrestling, paying the officials for hockey, and just the, well, the entire wrestling budget. You know, we will realize the $10,000 that we expected to realize when we decided to go in on this endeavor with the town of Carver. Community service projects are all listed here, same thing with the All-Stars. So there's not a lot of changes as far as that goes. Questions on the?
Questions on the winter report?
Yes.
Yes, Ken.
Let's see. Do you offer season passes, or is that a thing of the past?
No, we offer them in the first couple of games for every sport that we have a gate for, yes.
Okay. Next one might be.
And they're discounted. You get one free game if you buy one.
Okay, great. The next one might go more towards Mr. Palladino, or maybe you can answer it. Police details. On this one, it says police and EMS. I don't know if I saw it on the fall, but.
I think it's because in the fall, in the fall, EMS is on board for the football games only.
For football.
I think that's just the grid.
But you also have EMS in the winter?
We don't. That's just my secretary not understanding the sports, or she's just learning.
All right, well, she's not here, you shouldn't blame her.
I shouldn't throw her under the bus, because she's done a tremendous.
Yeah, that was my, that was my, one of my concerns is, why are we using EMS in the winter? I know the ambulance is there for football games, I just saw that. Steve or Scott, police details, is that, what are the limits? Like, football, are you required to have one, two, four officers? Basketball's usually one or two?
So Steve and I usually put our heads together and try and figure out, based on the record of the team, the geographic disparity between the teams we're playing. We really try and streamline that. It's a tremendous cost to us. It actually, I know Dr. Vinovich and I have had several conversations about the cost of the details. It's a cost, but we have to have a safe, you know, environment. And we try to make sure that when all is said and done, we have that safe environment. But there is a cost.
And one of the problems with the cost is it's extremely hard to budget, because one police officer will get $300 for doing a game, and another one will get $100, $180, so.
Yeah, I understand that it's a rotation, so one time you might get a lieutenant, and the next time you might have an officer.
Exactly.
So that's part of the thing. Is police coverage mandatory? Because being a basketball official, I noticed some schools don't even have it. I think it's great that, it's a good sight to have an officer at the games, but is that mandatory?
It's not mandatory. It's something that we've always done, but we've been very efficient this year. We've really cut back on our costs. The issue, as you mentioned, is it's in their contract, is they make a lot of money doing details for any public municipality. And it's very unfortunate, it's not cost-effective. But I don't want to be in a position where we have an event, something goes awry, and there's not a police detail there. We minimize it to the boys' basketball and the football because of the size of the gate, and that's what we try and do.
And it is mandatory in hockey. The Gallow Arena requires it.
Thank you, that's right.
Okay.
Most hockey rinks require it for their home, you know, for your home games.
One more question? I think I asked this before. Salaries. I think I asked this before. Salaries, it's a lot of money. Is that all contractual based on teaching positions and where they are and that? Because is everyone on the staff, football, basketball, baseball, whatever, is every coach salaried or are there volunteers?
Well, we have volunteers who are all quarried and, you know, fill out the volunteer form that we pass in to Kristi Preda to keep track of them. We currently have one working with baseball right now. We had two with our, I think we had, yeah, two with the basketball team. One was Chris Perry, who's a physical, a first-year physical education teacher at the high school. And another one was Larry Senna, who's been doing it forever for basketball. The hockey team had three volunteer coaches. And, you know, I can go on and on. We get a lot of volunteers.
So basically the way?
As far as the pay goes, the contract requires three steps. There's different groups that get paid different amounts of money. I think it was originally a long time ago based on the numbers of students in programs. So Kevin Brizalli is on step three. Steve Faniel and Mike Yeager are all on step three. If you look at football, I think we had two step-one coaches, one step-two coaches and one step-two coach. And three step-three coaches, including the head coach. So that's all based on the contract. And there's no other, you know, the money that you see here was budgeted for.
Just a point of clarification, there's basically one coach for each team. Each team that you have, with the exception of football, there's two coaches for each team. And the way it was negotiated, and it hasn't, the salary has not changed in quite a few years, was based on the length of the season. So obviously football's the longest season, your basketball, your hockey, longer seasons. So that's how it's broken down. And there, as Steve said, there's three steps and they've stayed pretty static from a financial standpoint.
And, you know, and from my experience, being an assistant coach, because technically we don't have freshman coaches and JV coaches, but obviously we need somebody to oversee those programs. If you're a freshman coach, you're going to work harder or as hard, probably harder, at least time-wise, spend more time with the team than the head coach. Because you're going to be at your own freshman games and then you're going to be at all the varsity games because you're an assistant coach. So, you know, these people work extremely hard. And it is a lot of money, but when you break it down on an hourly wage, they would, it's probably, we wouldn't be far from minimum.
Assistant coaches get sixty percent of a varsity coach at that step as well, just for mathematic purposes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to understand the Carver-Wareham situation. When I look at the spreadsheet, is it accurate to say that the total expenditures for Wareham would be the twenty-four thousand eight-ten minus the thirty-five hundred twenty-eight in gate receipts? Is that accurate?
What you see here is the twenty-four thousand eight-ten seventy-four is our total expenses in relation to hockey.
Just hockey?
Just hockey. Then the one thousand and six dollars and twenty-five cents were expenses that we incurred for wrestling.
Good, okay.
Okay? And so then we will take that amount, which would be twenty-five thousand eight-hundred-and-sixteen ninety-nine. And we would subtract Carver's expenditures and our gate receipts. Carver's expenditures for hockey, they paid for transportation to all the games and the officials for all the games.
So when you, why are we subtracting Carver's expenditures?
From the total expenses of the program.
Because we're going to get reimbursed for Carver's expenses?
These have already been paid. What's going to happen is this, when you subtract our gate receipts and Carver's expenses, it comes out to seventeen thousand, about seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'm trying to understand why we're subtracting Carver's expenditures.
Because they're for hockey, specifically for hockey. And we're responsible for expenses for hockey.
So whatever Carver incurs, we have to reimburse them?
We're not reimbursing them. Basically, they were going to give us, I believe the number's ten thousand dollars for hockey. They paid for these transportation and official costs. That comes out of there roughly ten thousand dollars that they're paying us. They'll cut us a check for fifty-four hundred dollars for the difference.
So the actual, I'm just trying to?
They're covering ten thousand dollars for hockey.
I'm just trying to understand the numbers. We have, our expenses for combined wrestling and hockey were the twenty-four plus the one.
Right.
They were offset by thirty-five hundred dollars worth of gate receipts, yes?
Which are ours, correct.
Which are ours. Are they also offset by another ten thousand?
No.
In the end, they will be. Once we take away, they've paid four thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and then they'll be giving us a check for the difference.
Ah, okay.
So they're going to be writing us a check for somewhere in the vicinity of five thousand four hundred dollars.
So our costs for the two programs are those, the twenty-five thousand minus the thirty-five hundred minus the difference between the ten thousand and the forty-three hundred?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, approxim, one of the ways that this was sold to us was that Mr. Langer felt that there would be a significant increase in hockey participation. Can you give this committee any sense of the number of people who participated in hockey and wrestling?
I think, just for clarification, I think it was wrestling is where he felt there'd be a huge number because he thought he would be coaching. So I think that's where the large number we were anticipating was going to come from. Hockey, I think, was staying pretty static. And I'll let Steve speak to that.
Hockey, there were nine players from Wareham and four players from Carver, which made it a very difficult season. Wrestling, we started off the season with, like I said, if you had sign-ups, we started off with about twenty students signed up. First practices, we sent nine. By the time, by about the third week of wrestling practice, we were down to two.
So our, my problem?
Which was very disappointing.
I understand.
You know, as much for them as it was for us.
So if I take the net cost and divide it by the number of students participating, we still have an exceedingly high number. The highest for any sport.
Correct.
So I remain perpetually concerned about that issue and I'll drop it there, Mr. and Madam Chair.
All right, great. Do you have anything?
Now, we do, I should throw in that, well, we, based on the number of eighth graders playing hockey, both on the bantam teams and the junior, the middle school team, which isn't actually associated with the middle school, but it's a middle school league. We expect anywhere from six to eight students that are in the eighth grade right now in Wareham to be matriculating into that hockey program.
And how many do we graduate, Steve?
Graduate, one senior. So we do expect the numbers to be up. And that doesn't count what Carver will add to that.
And also, in years past, we spent thirty-five thousand dollars for hockey. Steve's done a great job with a coach, really fine tuning the numbers and bringing this down, I believe, close to ten thousand dollars.
Okay. I know you want to get into a debate, but I'm cutting it off. Anyone else?
No, I don't actually.
My question just has to do with the overall report. This report that you prepare, is this just for the school committee or are there other places where you send this report?
Just for, well, my principal.
Absolutely.
But no, this is an internal report for the district.
So every single year, well, I've only been on the school committee for three years, but for those three years, there's always been an issue with the report. So there is a piece of data that a committee member feels that's missing or that the year-over-year isn't there. Would it be helpful if we came up with the school committee athletic report where then you would just have to fill in the data? So then we don't get into a debate here of, okay, this is not a full report because we don't have all the information that we need. Is that something that we could maybe work together to provide so there's finally a report that the school committee that we all agree on that we're looking for and has all the numbers and the comparisons that we're looking for? Just as long as we don't make you go crazy with numbers.
A template that would satisfy you would certainly be helpful, I think, to everybody.
Okay.
I'd volunteer to assist in that.
Thank you for volunteering because I was going to sign it to you, but I would ask that you work with the other members to forward it off to them so then you can also provide your feedback. We'll get that together and we'll provide that to you. So going forward, we're all on the same page. That would be great.
That would be great because for, you know, anybody that is new to this position, you know, this report probably took forty man-hours to prepare.
And I appreciate?
Well, for example, I believe you. That was sympathy, Steve.
Thank you.
But I think it's a good thing because it really gives us a true sense of what, not just for your presentation, but for Steve and I to put our heads together and see, you know, how efficient are we in this process?
Yeah, and I think that's ultimately what we're all looking for is that we need to be able to have hard facts year after year. So we're all making smart decisions on the future of sports in Wareham. So we'll definitely get that to you.
And if we can get it before the spring reporters do, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, please. He works late night, so.
I know, I get emails at eleven o'clock.
Right. All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight and preparing the report.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of gifts. Dr. Vinovich?
I'd like to recommend that we accept two hundred and seventy dollars from Chili's. So I think, well, and one hundred dollars from Jen Davis LLC to support the Grade Four Shabang Multiplication Incentive Program at the Minut Forest School.
So should we take those one at a time?
That's what I was going to start, but then they were both the same thing, so, yeah.
All right, so we'll take it.
Two seventies from Chili.
All right, great. I'll take a motion to accept the gift from Chili's for two hundred and seventy dollars.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Thank you very much, Chili's.
One hundred dollars from Jen Davis LLC.
I'll take a motion to approve that gift.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Four zero zero.
This money is going to go towards the purchasing of awards at the end of the school year for students who have mastered their multiplication tables. I recommend that we accept two hundred and fifty dollars from the Arbella Insurance Company towards the transportation costs for the Wareham High School chess team.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Four zero zero.
And I recommend that we accept a six-by-ten-foot U.S. flag through the AdoptaSchoolFlag.com and Franklin Flags from Mr. Jeff Swett for the Minut Forest Elementary School.
Thank you. It was very upsetting that that school didn't have a flag. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Four zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Swett.
Thank you very much.
Did you vote affirmative?
I was thinking of abstaining. Abstain.
Okay, so three, zero, one. Great. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, curriculum and technology.
No, the school calendar.
I'm so sorry. All right, so everyone has the revised school calendar that was sent out today? Michelle, was the revised one or?
Yes, we sent out the revised one today because we found that we did the same week as this year for April vacation, but that Patriots Day actually came a week after. And Easter was late for next year. So we decided to move it so that schools would close on Thursday, the seventeenth, I believe. We would have Good Friday off on April eighteenth. Then we'd have the following week off that includes Patriots Day. And would return to school on Monday, April twenty-first, two thousand fourteen.
April twenty-eighth, yeah.
Oh, thank you, April twenty-eighth.
Questions on the school calendar? Mr. Swett?
So my civic-minded tennis players wanted to understand exactly how we coordinate the calendar with elections. Has this been coordinated with elections with the town clerk?
No.
Are we supposed to be coordinating for next year with the town clerk?
No.
Will, which, will any of our schools be used as polling places next year?
Yes, because you cannot move a polling place without due notice of approximately ninety days. Everybody has to be mailed things. So this year, we were able, we held school during elections. We called the police department, asked for extra help at morning drop-offs and pickup, and it has worked.
Okay, thank you. So we haven't had to, bottom line is we haven't had to accommodate our schedule to elections.
That's correct. And there are, because of the Senate election, there is another September election, so there are multiple elections. I mean, we're having a primary in June that wasn't originally planned for. So there's no way that you can be closed in every election and still finish school before June thirtieth.
Thank you.
Questions on the school council? Eric Schreihounder?
Move approval of the calendars presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Four zero zero. Just one point on this. There were, I think, questions from the community regarding things that you say here, I think that we say all the time when we're talking about this, when we're talking about elections. And so if possible, going into the next, if school is open and we're holding elections in there, maybe we can do it or, but somehow getting the word out around the safety concerns and what we do to make sure that the community that is going into a polling place, that there is separation there, that there are police detail, that there is really no way that the students and the population interact except maybe out in the parking lot.
At the last election, and many of you probably had the same occurrence, when I went into Minut Forest to vote, there were, I think, ten poll workers, one police officer, and I was the only person voting. So it was well in hand security-wise. And the schools do close off the areas and with the extra police, the police have been quite good about, we get our resource officer to put the call in for us. So that's something we can ask them to do to make sure that, you know, we're on top of it.
Okay, great. All right, so moving on, superintendent's report, curriculum and technology.
Okay, after the last school committee meeting, where we did not end until, I think sometime after ten P.M., at seven-thirty the next morning, we had a robust conversation about curriculum and technology. And both the tech, the student services director and the curriculum director and myself and two members of the school committee were present. And I think that was everybody that came. So what we talked about at the meeting is Mr. Luzon gave an update on our wireless project. We showed the maps about what wireless has been put in so far. We talked about what we hope to get done by the end of this year into July first funding. We talked about E-rate. E-rate is a way for us to get back money on our costs. So instead of phone service, let's say costing a hundred dollars at the office, it may only cost forty dollars because you get a percentage off depending on our free and reduced lunch. But it's something we have to claim. We have to put in all of the information about what our projects are. You have to be planned ahead of time. You have to have an on-file tech plan before you do this. And then you get back your reimbursements. Just recently, we received from Pearson bills and they would have been four thousand dollars for a particular bill. We only? We only wound up paying twelve hundred dollars because of the work done on E-Rate, and that's something that has to be done every year. So we have to have our tech plan done before next January, when the E-Rates have to be filed again. So that's something that Bob has been overseeing for us through the end of this year. We also have moved to Google, so that we talked about the conversion to the Google email system, and that help has been available at the various school buildings. After school, for anybody that needed help moving onto Google, if they, like myself, had more than one Google account and had forgotten their password, how to find out and, you know, move things off of the business one onto a personal one, and so forth. So that's been moving along, and we find that more and more people are now using it, less people are using the old system, and the next step, we hope by the middle of May, is to move into Google Docs, and help will be given along the way. You heard the teacher tonight, Ms. LaSosa, talk about Google Forms, and so as those of you that use it, there are many applications available through this, but the thought is, we will keep bringing them on one at a time to get people up to speed on them. There are videos available for people to go on and to find out how to use this. So we're changing our training techniques, our professional development is also using technology.
I was just gonna say one.
Please, fill in it.
Well, I think that we saw a great example tonight about flipping the classroom and what it does and how our students are benefiting from that, and I think that Mr. Luzon in the meeting, you know, echoed the same thing when it comes to how we're providing professional development, and it could be more cost-effective, it also, you know, could be a great way that, you know, that we're teaching ourselves, we're learning, and we're learning things a different way, but then you provide people either through a one-eight-hundred number, or when they come back into the classroom, to be able to ask questions on what they learned. So this is a great example of that, that there is a ton of resources that are available out there to get staff up to speed. It's all about just taking that initiative, watching the video, learning about it, and then asking the questions that you need to ask.
We then, Mrs. Rattella started talking to us about many of the things going on through the curriculum office, benchmark assessments, but I wanna shed some light about this Edward Teaching and Learning System, and Edwin, and that is not an acronym. It doesn't stand for anything, so we don't have to worry about those letters. Where you have seen us come before you and talk about INFORM, you've talked, we've talked about the curriculum mapping tool that we have. Well, the state has now come out with a program from Think Gate, I believe, is that right, Jan? That basically does both of those functions. So it's basically a one-stop shopping place, where a teacher could go, find the standards that they need to teach, they can find model lessons in the curriculum, they can develop assessments. We actually watched, and I'll talk about that, two of our instructional leaders, or actually an instructional leader, and one of our special ed teachers came and made a presentation where they showed us in the same Edwin learning that they built, the teacher built an assessment, could go to the curriculum on, let's call it first grade math, number sense, and answered a few questions, I want ten questions, on this concept, and it generated the test for them. Now, the next best part of this is if that class had a group of iPads, the children could then take the test on the iPad, and instantaneously, the grade would be uploaded into that, like in INFORM, but so that you have the data there. And the same thing with our benchmark tests, so we can put exams in, or this can do it. It's very exciting, but it's at the beginning. We are in a pilot, and again, only because I'm sensitive to the district report that talked about too many initiatives. This is where the state is going. The state says we have to be there in a few years, so by us being in the pilot, they pay for it for the first two years, and they are sensitive to our needs. They are willing to look at what we have in INFORM and move it into this new analytics, Edwin Analytics, which is another part of the software. So you will get much more information about this at another time, but I thought it was one of the exciting things, and we mentioned it at this curriculum technology meeting. Then at our administrators' meeting, we had this presentation. To then move to the next part of it, there is part of the evaluation system called DDM, or District Determined Measures, that the state says we must have by the end of next year, and actually, we're supposed to start some in September and then develop more of them. But we have a subcommittee, or our Management Labor Evaluation Committee, that sat and watched, well, actually, we were, we've done it once, we watched a webinar, and then another time, we downloaded the webinar, and we sat among ourselves and went through the webinar presentation, teaching ourselves about these district determined measures, without having to go anyplace else. It was embedded during the school day. It started at one o'clock, we went until about three-thirty. So there are lots of this going on, where people are using technology to try to learn new skills and to move along with the changes that the state continues to make. You can't not move ahead, because then you're gonna be left behind, and so I think that was one of the things we talked about during this. We talked about the elementary literacy lab that will be happening this summer, the STEM pilot that's gonna be beginning next fall at Wareham Middle School, and that we are focusing on standards of practice in the Common Core. And then we got into a discussion of both the roles of the instructional leaders and interventionists, for a little clarification. So the group agreed that, we also talked about funding and the budget issues, and that we needed the funds that we have requested, so that we may continue making progress without cutting back the core things like classroom teachers. And so that was a lot said in a brief time, but it was a very, kind of an exciting meeting, from beginning to end, even though it was seven-thirty to eight-thirty in the morning.
Right.
Questions?
Questions?
Yes. Did I hear correctly that the goal from the state is for us to get away from INFORM and into the new Edwin?
They are looking to standardize this. It doesn't, at this point, we're still in the process where we're gonna need both programs until it's fully functional. Those of us that have been here for a while have seen the state roll things out before, and then not deliver.
Gotcha.
So the hope is that that's where we're gonna get to, but, you know, some people say I'm from Missouri. Show me.
And if that is the case, I guess there's some middleware that lets you import it from INFORM into the new Edwin?
That's what this Think Gate is working on. In fact, I know Janice had a meeting with them, or is gonna be having one with the software company about that particular item.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add is that, you know, we went along those lines too, and it was kind of like, how many times are you gonna burn me, state, you know? So it's like, you know, do we, when do we actually start? Do we hold off a little bit? Do we wait for somebody else to be the guinea pig and see it fail, and then we're like, yay, we didn't do it? So there's, I think that that's one thing that they're looking at, is when do we actually take that jump? And to me, the jump is, is when we start rolling it out to teachers, and because that is where you get the pushback of, alright, this is just another change, and another change, and that's where the frustration sets in. So, you know, this is the reason why the administrators are here, to be able to go and to learn all of this, and then make the logical decision on when to actually take that leap and roll it out across, and you hope a little bit that they fail before we do that, so then, that. Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so on to school committee reports. The first one is the Superintendent's Search Update. You all have seen emails from me just regarding a lot of meeting times, and I thank you for all of your responses, trying to coordinate. This group, as well as the interview committee, has not been fun, but I think we're finally set. To give you just an update on the search, there are currently forty applications that have been vetted, so we have a pool of forty candidates that Rain Associates will be taking a look at, going through their own vetting process, and then coming with a recommendation to us. But very, very pleased with the number forty. I think that that is where we saw in some of the larger communities where they kind of settled in at, we didn't expect that many applicants for this community, but we have it, and so there's a pool of forty that they're gonna be vetting. The next step is the step of when Rain Associates will come and recommend to us who they think should go into the semifinalist round. We will all receive all forty of the applications, but they are, but what we'll focus on is their recommendation of who should go into that semifinalist round. They'll come to us with a number, and it's going to be anywhere between eight to a dozen. We can either say, we want the dozen, we want fourteen, or we want four. It's our call on really who we put forward through to the next round. That session that's gonna be happening on April twenty-fifth at six PM is executive session. The main reason why that has to stay in executive session is for the protection of the applicants. There are many sitting superintendents that are in this pool, and we wanna make sure that if they're not gonna be chosen going into the next round, that their name isn't leaked. So that has to happen in executive session. After that meeting is the big meeting on May fourth. This is also an executive session, because we will be interviewing the semifinalist candidates. This is where the interview committee that was formed, that is a group from the Board of Selectmen, to community members, to administrators, parents, that are on this committee. There'll be basically two groups, the interview committee and the school committee. We'll be in two separate rooms, the candidates will come in, they'll interview with the interview committee first, and then cycle in through us. That meeting starts at one o'clock. People keep asking me, how long are we gonna be here? That depends on this group here. If we're gonna pull in twelve candidates, we're gonna be here for a while. If we're gonna have less, then it'll take a little bit less, but that meeting, we have to really commit to that meeting and make sure that we are giving every candidate that we bring in ample time, because that is where we're going to choose who the finalists are. So that is on May fourth. May sixth, which is two days later, will be the finalist round. This will be held in open session. What we are going to do for that one, and that's only the school committee, where we will interview the final candidates, recommending, you know, they recommend anywhere between two and three. I've also talked with WCTV and Wareham Week, and they have tentatively agreed that that will be filmed live, so people at home can watch while the final candidates are interviewed. Wareham Week has tentatively agreed to actually have that live streaming on their paper, and also live blogging going on. What that will do is allow us, if we want to, to be able to see the live blogging that's going on, and if there are any questions that we feel that are important to this process, we can ask them during that. There's no guarantee, but it's something that, I think, again, opens up this process and allows the community, and people that wanted to be part of this process and didn't, still a way to be able to have input into the final candidates. So that was my update. I'll open it up, and if anybody has any questions on the Superintendent's Search. Yes?
There's forty.
Yes.
Passed the first filter. They're going to call that down to some number. But I recall they said that access to all forty would be made available to us. Is that correct?
Yes.
When will that access be available?
Either the night before or the morning of.
If we see a candidate that is not in their recommended pool?
Yes.
Is there a process by which we can say, and I'll defer to you, let's say, three out of five of us wanted to see a certain candidate, is there a process whereby we could add a name or two to that group?
So that's the reason why, if folks didn't know, the original timeline that we published, that there was a very short time turnaround time from the April twenty-fifth to when we did the first interview. It was actually like forty-eight hours. The reason why I asked, one of the reasons why, first of all, scheduling and all of you guys is I don't want that as my job ever, but the second reason is because of exactly that. We're not going to have a lot of time to really look at all forty. Yes, we'll be able to, as we're having our meeting on the twenty-fifth, we can take a look and ask questions during that process, but we're not gonna have a lot of time unless you are not gonna sleep that, you know, that night, and read all of them, to really say, there's one in there that I wanna see, right? So that's the reason why, to then give us a week. There is not a meeting scheduled in that week where we would be able to come back together, but what I would ask, and I was gonna say this on the twenty-fifth, is that if you feel compelled, and there is somebody that you wanna fight for, and you feel very strongly about that, then we'll probably need to call a special meeting in between that week. So you have to really care about that candidate to say, I want to, I want to call a meeting and pull them together.
And is it your view that three members would have to agree to add a person in order for that person to be added?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's the reason why we spent so much time choosing a search firm. We have to give a little bit. Not that I don't think individual opinions, you know, don't matter, they absolutely do, but this is a committee decision, we have pulled together a search firm, we have to do a little bit of a leap of faith when it comes to their recommendations. They have done, they know more than we do.
Did you just say we put?
Little bit. But they've done the due diligence, so there's getting into, we might have an absolutely stellar resume that's in front of us, but we have to remember that Rain Associates are going through not only a one-hour interview with a candidate, but they're also, they have the, you know, the private investigators, and they don't, but they do, they have staff there that they're going much, much deeper than we are, than just being able to take a look at a piece of paper. So just take that into account when you're taking a look at a resume, that there's more behind that resume. Welcome. Yes?
Let's say there was one or two that you really did wanna fight for, right? Process-wise, I mean, before getting the committee involved, would it be appropriate, would it be okay to contact Rain Associates and say, listen, you know, what was it about this one?
Absolutely. I think that's a great suggestion, Mike. So contacting, they're available to all of us, even though I'm their liaison, it's open to all of us, so at any time, you can contact them and ask them about a candidate.
Say, listen, what was it about this one that turned you off?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and it's their right to hold information, you know, they have another, they have to protect the people that are also applying too, but I mean, I'm sure that they'll tell you generally the reason why they didn't have him go forward.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna undermine anything that you were doing, that's all.
Nope.
Alright.
No, I'm completely fine with that. Any other questions? Moving on to the next item is the policy review recommendation. Mr. Tella, are you okay to speak on that, or should we hold off until the next meeting?
Whatever's your question.
Okay, committee, do we want to, it's on the agenda, if you can come up. And really, the committee has had a chance to take a look at this, so I don't think that we have to go deep into the changes, just anything that you think is substantial, and then the committee can ask questions based on what they've seen. So if we went in order of what came in our packet, the controlled substances was the first one?
Why don't you bring it up, and then I'll answer any questions. I mean, controlled substances was very tightly aligned with the law and the state regulations, so that one was pretty cut and dry, but.
Okay. Alright, so questions from the committee regarding changes? Okay. Alright, so questions from the committee regarding changes to controlled substances?
It's, I'm, sorry.
I was gonna say, it's a town policy. There was no changes recommended.
No.
Okay.
No, it was just, we reviewed it with current laws and it went through. I mean, there was no, I think we might have done one grammatical edit, but that was about it.
Is it, is it, is it fair to say that it has not been revised since November of 2005?
It is fair to say that. And again, it follows mass general law.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna, this goes to you, Michelle. So, there is no flexibility that we have when creating, okay. Alright, so I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
So I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. The next one?
Is your retention?
Which one is it?
Retention?
Retention?
Retention.
Am I going in different order?
Retention. There was extensive discussion at the administrative team meeting about retention specifically at the elementary level. And both of our elementary principals contributed the changes. So this was vetted by all principals at, I believe, two different administrative team meetings over the last couple of months. Then Dr. Robinevich and I met and reviewed the principals' recommendations. Those recommendations were forwarded to the policy committee and what you have before you reflects the principals' recommendations and the discussion of the policy review committee.
Okay. Questions? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. School district wellness program?
This was vetted by our school nurses and by the Mrs. Perry for the cafeteria. I'm going to defer to Dr. Robinevich because I know he met with Mrs. Perry regarding this wellness policy. I don't believe there were any substantive changes. Dr. Robinevich, would you want to add, please?
We had to delete where we had a wellness, I think it was a director. At one point, we had a department head in charge of physical education and health K to 12, and we had written that person in as the person that would oversee this policy. We no longer have that position, so we rewrote this. And in places, we added either, the curriculum for health was with the curriculum director, our superintendent's designee. We added principals when it came to making sure that physical education was being offered and other school-based activities. And so we just changed whose responsibility it was to make sure that these things occurred, including the evaluation of this that goes on yearly.
Okay. Any questions? Yes?
So, where it's highlighted in whatever color this is, under evaluation says the superintendent or designee, and it still says Director of Curriculum. All of that is?
Is the new verbiage because before there was a wellness coordinator that no longer exists.
We had a K through 12, health and PE person, that that position was cut in one of the budget.
Okay, I get it.
Previous budgets.
Thanks for the clarification.
Everyone else all set? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. The next one is the reconsideration of instructional resources.
This particular policy probably consumed the most time and consideration and reconsideration. Originally, the policy regarding reconsideration of instructional resources, which in shorthand simply means that a parent or family can object to any particular instructional resource on the basis of their personal beliefs or the content of that resource. That policy was originally embedded in the library policy and it just, it didn't fit, it didn't fit with MASC's recommendation for policies, so we separated the two. You've already approved, I believe, the library policy, but not this portion of it because this was pulled out. And we in fact did have a situation about five years ago where a family objected to a summer reading book. At that time, we followed the recommendations of MASC, which in fact is this policy. And so when we developed this policy, we used the MASC recommendations, we used their boilerplate, if you will, for a policy and brought it before the committee. And that is what you have before you. There's a few, there were some grammatical things we changed to clarify what it said, but the procedure that is here is separate from the policy. The practice is that any person has the right to request that instructional, a particular instructional resource be reconsidered or that their child, their student be waived from using that particular resource. This policy lays that out and then we have the standard of practice that we've followed in the past, providing an alternative for that student.
Okay. Questions? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Home and hospital instruction, just high level.
It's high level. This was reviewed because there was concern about highly qualified teacher. Mr. Luzon has given a lot of information to the policy review committee about the process and procedures that are in practice for students who are hospitalized or who, for medical reasons, are at home. And once that was reviewed and he shared more of those details with the committee, any concerns about highly qualified teachers and the fact that we do not, as a district, relinquish control of the curriculum. We provide the curriculum and then in the hospital or home setting, the tutors instruct according to our curriculum and the assessments are completed by our teachers.
Okay. I'm just rushing you along just because we can hardly hear you.
The rain is drowning me out.
Any questions on this policy? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Alright, attendance grade nine through 12?
Attendance grade nine through 12 was discussed by high school members of this policy review committee. I'll try to raise my voice, that helps. There were no substantive changes. There was review of the two days returning after an absence, getting the work and having the notes come in from home if there was a medical reason. But basically, what you have before you is a slightly edited policy, but no substantive changes.
Questions? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. Last one, early graduation.
Again, early graduation was reviewed. There was a lot of discussion about how many students actually take advantage of this. There doesn't seem to be more than one to three in any given year. And there was no, no in-depth discussion other than we have a policy and there are procedures and practices in place.
Okay. Questions on this policy? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Thank you very much, I appreciate.
Thank you.
You reviewing that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, no, I just, I just wanted to thank Mr. Swett for sitting in for me at that meeting. I couldn't make it. I gave him a call on short notice and he attended in my place of myself.
Great.
Thank you.
Alright, next Jenna item, leasing of Hammond School by Boys and Girls Club.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Luzon to come down. During this process, there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of meetings at the Hammond School.
Dr. Robinevich, should I leave? Someone to talk about?
No, not at all. But Mr. Luzon has been my point person on this. In your package, you have the original letter that we received from the Boys and Girls Club showing their intent to want to rent space at the Hammond Elementary School. We then have a memo that I sent to the town administrator requesting the help of Attorney Bowens to put together a lease. And he did that. And then Bob took over from that point, making sure that we changed all the verbiage that we needed to satisfy the Boys and Girls Club of New Bedford, whose name needed to be into this. And the bottom line here is it talks about, we put together the square footage and we came up with 7,821 square feet that the Boys and Girls Club wanted to rent. We took the total costs, what it cost us to heat the building and for electricity, and put that out and came up with this dollar fifty-two per square foot. And we came up with $991 per month. And that is just for half. So I may have left something out, so I'll ask Mr. Luzon to fill in.
No, I think, I think you did very well. There's, we're looking at approximately $12,000 in revenues from that. That's really, our focus was a cost-neutral kind of, of an approach, looking at the square footage. And these were based on actual figures while the building was in full use. So we do feel that we had good numbers to work from when we put the lease together. I think the only thing I would add is that the remaining pieces are to look at the potential other leases that may occur in that building and make sure that they're compatible kinds of uses for the building. And we have to look at some of the things, once other tenants, if you will, are in place, just making sure that we're looking at all of the space and its compatible use of the space for the, for any leases that are in there.
One additional thing I just wanna mention is that in the letter to the town administrator, the second paragraph is the citation of municipal law that allows the school committee to rent space in a school building that is not being used as a school. And so that's the, what allows us to do this. Attorney Bowen is the person that showed me this particular citation so that the town administrator and Attorney Bowen have been with us through this process.
And I would just add too, that we've gone through the various town departments and they've been out to take a look with us to make sure that we're in compliance with all the local codes and so forth.
The entire Inspection Services Department visited with us there last Friday.
We had a number of white pickup trucks.
And it was very successful and we thanked them for the help.
Questions from the committee? Yes?
Percentage-wise, how much of the building will the Boys and Girls Club take up?
Percentage-wise, it's 7,821 square feet. The remaining space is 12,214.
And you mentioned there may be some other uses, some other leases. Now, are we still considering moving the Everett folks over there?
Let me give you a little, so it is possible with the other leasie that, let's call it ninety percent of the building may be leased and pay for all of the costs that it would cost us. And as part of a conversation between the town administrator, the seated director, Mr. Luzon and myself and Anna, there is space that has become available in the multi-service center that is accessible by elevator. And there is the job center that is moving out. And that will give us enough space for what we had in Everett, so that we will not have to pay costs from Everett or from Hammond.
That, that sounds like an excellent opportunity.
We hope it will turn out to be.
Thank you.
We're reserving one particular space at Hammond at this point for the beyond-school time office. That is still up in the air in terms of just looking at, I guess, the dominoes of the various moves that need to occur. At this point, it may be that beyond-school time won't have sufficient space at the middle school to stay where they are. If that were the case, we need to just look at what the better fit is for them. So it may make sense for them to be at Hammond, given the presence of the Boys and Girls Club as well as the other potential leases that would be there.
But the idea is to get out of Everett.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Jeff?
I realize we're talking about the Boys and Girls Club and we're privileged to have the executive director on this committee, but it doesn't sound like this was an arms-length transaction. Is that a fair statement?
Do you wanna define what you mean?
Yeah. Two, two parties negotiating a deal that's in the best interest of both, both parties. Both parties are negotiating to achieve ends and, and they come to a meeting of their minds.
Yes, I would concur that that's what occurred.
Really? Because you're valuing the space at zero.
I would not concur with that.
Well, you said the rent is based on the utilities.
That is correct.
Then, then everything else about the space is, has no value? By definition.
In looking at space and potential leases, it became evident that if we went with fair market value, we would have an empty building.
I don't, I don't really wanna spend a lot of time on this. I'm, I'm very pleased that, that we have found a tenant that seems, are going to be able to effectively use the space. That's, that's not the issue. I'm just uncomfortable that by definition, this isn't fair. We're valuing the space at zero. And it really isn't fair market value unless you're saying there is, there is space all over the town of Wareham that is identical and we're competing with, with all of that space. And for that reason, we have to give the space away for nothing.
No, I, I believe what I'm saying is that after consultations with the town, that a discussion was held about what would be in the best interests of the town for the use of that facility. And that after those discussions, we had the conversation with the Boys and Girls Club.
If I'm the only one concerned about it, so be it. I just, as I said, this is, this is the Boys and Girls Club and this is our colleagues. So I'm a little uncomfortable with, with bringing it up, but it does seem on the, on the face of it that it's not fair market value. And it's not arms-length. And I, I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable with it from a legal perspective unless there's some evidence to support that it is in fact fair market value and an- some evidence to support that it is in fact fair market value and an arms-length transaction. Because we're being asked to vote on it and that approval is a legal approval by this elected body. And so what I've heard so far doesn't give me any comfort.
Yes.
But I'm the only one concerned.
What's the current arrangement at the current building, per square foot? Is that, oh, you wouldn't know, would you?
At the Boys and Girls Club currently?
The current wasn't, yeah.
They have a 99-year lease for $1.
Do they pay utilities?
Yes. Heat and utilities.
So it's utilities plus a buck for 99 years? All right, well.
And this municipal law only allows us to offer it for up to 10 years. And the reason for going for the longer time rather than a shorter time is that for the Boys and Girls Club or any other leasie to actually spend money for improvements, to go to a bank, they need to have a longer lease than a year.
Could I also clarify that the figure that was reached for the per-square-foot cost was the first step? That did not include any conversation with any of the potential leases. That was simply our business office coming up with the figures and presenting that as a part of a proposal. The second thing that I would say is that in terms of, I mentioned at the beginning that this was cost neutral. It would be a mistake to think that closing the Hammond School would have zero cost to it or the potential of the Everett building moving over to the Hammond School wouldn't have any cost. It absolutely would have cost to it. And so it is cost neutral. It will cost us zero, it would not cost us zero if either we closed Hammond or Everett moved to Hammond.
Yes.
So let's say we move some folks from Everett to Hammond or even the leases. Would the Boys and Girls Club be paying their utilities?
No, because they would only be paying for the portion of the building that they're using.
And it's zoned that way or?
No, the heat goes on and we took the total cost. We took the total cost of what it costs us to heat that building the last year the school was in operation fully. And the electricity for that time. And we put those together with, I believe, some money on fixing items.
Correct.
That have, you know, I think we have an account there for fixing equipment. That was also part of the calculation.
So there's some maintenance in there?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have to agree with my colleague, Mr. Swett. When I took a look at the 991, I said, that's the best piece of property in, you know, Wareham and I want to move in there. So I'm just going to put my house up for sale and I'm going to ask the schools if it's okay. But, I mean, I had to look at the bigger picture when it comes to the Boys and Girls Club moving in there. And, you know, again, it's a building that we have moved out of and the concern that I had and I think many community members had was how the grounds, not only the inside of that building, but also how the grounds were going to be maintained and how they're going to be used. And so my question is, any improvements inside and outside? I saw it listed in here, but who's responsible for that? Is that something that, if the Boys and Girls Club comes to us and says, this is something that we want to do, whether it's repainting the classrooms or building a new playground outside or putting up new nets and the tennis courts, is that something that they would come to us, we would agree or disagree, and then they would have to pay for that? Do the improvements come out of the Boys and Girls Club's budget or is it something that they would be looking to us to fund?
So all of those have been parts of the conversations, not only with the Boys and Girls Club, but also subpoena from the CETA director if they were able to come in and use grant funds to do some of the improvements as well. There have been a number of those things that have been identified, both in the exterior and the interior of the building, that is still part of what's being discussed. But improvements that are in place now, basketball courts and grounds and making sure the parking areas are appropriate and so forth are things that the Boys and Girls Club have discussed about putting together and presenting that to us.
Okay.
Part of the lease also talks about working with the other leasie in identifying spaces, for example, that are appropriate for just the kids that would be involved with Boys and Girls Club versus parking area for any of the other activities that are going on in the building. But there are a number, and I don't really think I want to share them at this point, the specifics of them, but there are several things that CETA is interested in being able to do if they were to occupy that building to upgrade a number of the things that are inside the building.
It's just, it's one of the benefits that I do see about this transaction also, that you're having a group go in that will also take part in the improvements of the grounds and also that building. And that is a benefit that we wouldn't have if we just abandoned the building. So it's one of the things that I took into account. The other quick question that I had was around, do the funds that we're receiving, the monthly rent that we're receiving, does that go into a revolver? And which revolver are we?
It could go into the building and grounds, but it would be segregated into just being used for the Hammond School. That's all it would be used for.
Okay. And with taking this vote tonight, when have you heard that the, you're not here right now, when would they like to move into the building?
The Boys and Girls Club would like to be able to move in prior to the summer season so that they could begin their programming. So they're motivated to do that as quickly as possible so that they can get in, get the things done that they need to inside and be ready to run their programs for the summer.
Questions? Any other questions?
Did I hear correctly that the arrangements on maintenance haven't really been finalized?
For improvements, maintenance has been, in terms of just the repairs and upkeep of the building, any damages and so forth are all part of the lease.
The damages are part of the lease?
The thing that, I'm sorry?
The damages are part of the lease?
Yes.
And I just, I bring that up because, I mean, we just had a, I just had a meeting last night at the middle school and as I'm walking out to my car, I look across the street at the Boys and Girls Club and the chain link fences all smashed and the doors off the hinges and I'm like, what happened? And that was pretty recent, I think, but I don't want that to happen at our building. Who would be responsible for something like that? Vandalism, I guess, in that portion of the, of the Boys, of that building?
I would say that it would be, it would be on the whoever was in that part of the building. Or if it's a vandalism, vandalism in the schools is handled in a couple of ways. Some of it is insurance, some of it is that there needs to be repayment for damages, like a book is destroyed or that kind of thing, that it falls on the student. And I think it would be the same thing with the Boys and Girls Club. But damages as a result of use is part of the lease that's identified for the Boys and Girls Club and it would be for any other leasie. We also have, when I say we, the attorneys really put in the, for any insurances that it, liability and other kinds of insurances that need to be in place.
I guess my last thought would be, do we need to vote on this tonight?
My belief is that the Boys and Girls Club, we're looking for commitment so that they could move ahead with some improvements. And so, you know, they're kind of frozen until, you know, we've given them the okay.
I'll take the committee's recommendation on it. We don't have a full board here tonight. Kenny, you'll probably have to abstain, correct? And so if, I'll look to the committee to see what your thoughts are on that.
I think we should have a full board. That's the big decision.
Okay. We have another school committee meeting in two weeks.
May eighth.
Is that the next meeting?
Is the word you want?
May. Okay. No, is it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that, we're talking about a month from now. So that...
A month from now?
Yeah, May eighth.
Right, so today's the tenth, so it's a little bit less than a month. We're talking about holding up work to be done on that. Does the committee have significant concerns around the budget as, I mean, as the contract as it's laid out that, I mean, because I know that we don't have a full board, but I don't think that that's enough to not call for the vote tonight. We've been talking about this for a couple times, a couple times I have heard concerns. But if you, I just, I'd like to hear any significant concerns that people have, the reason that either we need to call back with more information, but that would be the only reason why I would want to delay the vote tonight. Yes?
I am very conflicted on this. I want the Boys and Girls Club to get in this space. I want them to enjoy the space. I think they'd be a great tenant for this space. And yet I don't think, I can't vote to approve it because I'm uncomfortable with the process. I'm very comfortable with the tenant, but I'm uncomfortable with the process. And so to me, it doesn't matter whether we vote on it tonight or a month from now, I'm not sure how I'm going to get comfortable with the process. So if the vote is going to be favorable, I think we should let them get in and do their work and let them, and let them take advantage of the space as soon as possible because they've got their own operational concerns and I don't want to delay them. And so my concern about the process is, is my concern, it's really independent of timing.
Just the one last question that I'll have for either Dr. Vavich or Mr. Luzon is, this, I know that you said it before, but this has been vetted through town departments, including the town administrator. And the town administrator, even though it might not have been official sign-off, but has signed off on this.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, great. I'm going to call for the vote then. I will take a motion to approve the contract between the leasing of the Hammond School by the Boys and Girls Club. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained? Aye.
Two, one, one. So the last item on the agenda is any other business. Are there any other business from committee members? I have one. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. So last night, there was a Board of Selectmen meeting and I want to congratulate Peter Tittlebaum on being elected chair of that board and I look forward to working with him, as do I'm sure all the members here with our newly elected officials and the ones that are still on the board. Just to take a little moment from last night, there were three talking points that resonated with me that I just think is worth repeating here. One, some of the things that were said last night was, you know, it can't be an us versus them mentality, that this is one town and we've been hearing that kind of going as a forward momentum and I want us to continue that here, that it's not an us versus them when it comes to the budget. It's very, very important that as a school board, we fight for every single dollar that is needed in the school district. I believe that and I think that we should continue to do that, but in a respectful manner. We also need to be able to see at the other side that there is a board that is responsible for the entire town finances. But again, it's not an us versus them, it's more collaboratively, the best that we can. How can we come with the best argument? The second thing is that I heard that was very positive and I was excited about was that schools are a priority because it affects this entire town. And I was so happy to hear that, I, you know, that, and that I think that that should be something that's said across this town, that the schools and having incredible schools affects the entire town. And that's the reason why it's important to work together. And the last one is that we have to work together to find solutions to this, what is called this budget crisis, but we are right now going into town meeting with two different budgets. The, what was said last night, and I got an email, the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen are asking if this group will come together on the 17th, so it's next Wednesday. We do not have a school committee meeting, so I'm asking the board if they would be willing, it's not confirmed yet, and I don't have a time, but would be willing to meet on the 17th, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM. I'd also like to ask if the town administrator and the superintendent be there, but I wanted to ask from this committee if you would be willing to meet on the 17th for that joint meeting between the three boards.
The superintendent is not available today.
He's right here away.
I'm late.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm available, but if I am, I certainly would go.
Okay. Ken?
Not available?
All right, so what I'll do is get in touch with Cliff, just so I want to make sure that we have a quorum before we make a...
I'm trying to call a phone.
It wouldn't, but I, he's answering his cell phone. I called him. And so I'll just, I'll call him and see before I get back an answer, but I want to make sure. So I'll be able to attend, you'll be able to attend. There's a no and a maybe, so I just want to make sure that there's another positive, affirmative before I get back to them. Yes?
Do you have an agenda for this meeting?
Not yet, but I will, and I understand that that's probably a concern with agreeing to be part of this, but I promise you that we will work that out and it'll be a useful, please do our best to make it a useful, productive time for this committee.
Would you like to hear a supposition of the agenda?
Of, always.
I was told that they would be looking to delay the vote on the budget and hold a special town meeting 60 days after town meeting to give the Board of Selectmen and school board time to continue to negotiate.
There's a discussion point. Thank you for that. Okay. So I have, I appreciate that time. I will relay that information back. I will try to get in touch with Cliff and see if we can go forward for that meeting on the 17th. Is there any other business?
No.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.